Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for approval of the agenda today.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I will second.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have utility permits and Secondary Roads Department report. So we have one, two, three, four utility permits.
I got five.
Five utility permits.
Yep, we got an updated one. I will make a motion to approve permit numbers six dash six dash eighteen A, B, C, D, and E as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion as second, any further discussion?
A, B, C, and D are all Century Lynx and E is Midland Power.
Yes.
In different areas.
Okay, all in favor of passing utility permits as presented say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is open fuel bids for the fiscal year 2019. Drum roll please Bruce.
One bid.
Okay.
Hopefully it's good. It's from HaggVantage FS. And they always bid in cents over their cost. This is eight point nine five cents. Last year it was ten and a half. So.
Okay.
This is for county conservation too.
Okay.
For gas and propane.
So you'll review the contract, everything, and then we'll come back and look at that on item twenty-three, okay?
Does that go with IRVM also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and go to item number six, open the equipment lending bids.
First one is Hardin County Savings Bank. Third one is GNB. Three point nine nine. Three point four zero. Two point four eight. Three point seven eight. That's it.
Okay.
Caterpillar didn't move? They did not.
I was just gonna ask the same thing, so.
Who?
Caterpillar.
Oh.
Through their finance, so. Okay, I'll go ahead and let you guys review those and then we will take action later in the meeting. Yes?
Is that fixed or just?
Fixed.
Fixed or just?
Yes, fixed. All right, Taylor, we'll go ahead and move to item number seven, which is the approval of the contract for Culver replacement project FM dash CO four-two sub eight-nine dash five-five dash four-two.
Yep, so this is our Culver Southwest Garden City, Indiana Bedrane District project. Bids were what, April?
May.
Yeah, so I gave you guys the printout of what the bids were, the DOT, they always accept a low bid, you know, as long as everything's kosher. So this is with lodge construction out of Clarksville.
Okay.
Or what is it, two hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Yep, eight fifty-nine.
Okay, so all we need is approval from you guys to move forward with that and then get started.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Culver replacement project FM CO forty-two eighty-nine fifty-five forty-two with lodge construction.
Want to do the amount of?
Yep, two hundred and twenty-two thousand to eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second it.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call Nancy.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next I have is item eight, acknowledge receipt for request of road classification change.
You guys got that, didn't you?
Yep.
So this is for our road, three hundred and fifth street just west of Highway sixty-five. Has about forty-five cars a day, it's got a acreage, it's got a hog confinement on the road, so it's pretty highly traveled for Level B. So they've requested in two thousand and eleven to bring it up and to bring attention back to it. So I looked through it and we didn't really ever say when we created our Level Bs how to upgrade them, so we decided to play it safe and we should just do a public hearing for it. So I'll be gone in two weeks, so if you'd like to wait until I'm back, we looked it up, our next meeting would be July third.
Okay. So.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt for request of road classification change.
I will second it.
Okay, I have a motion as second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The discussions here, yes ma'am?
My question was how long has it been Level B, was the acreage added after it was Level B and where the hog sites put there when it was Level B?
I think it was Level B in eighty-nine, seventy-eight or eighty-nine, it's been a long time. The acreage is built like the two thousand, so that's very recent.
And why, I just don't like why you built on a Level B, but.
The hog house wasn't built on a Level B.
The hog site's probably been there, yeah.
Is the hog site beyond this road?
There's a hog site on that.
On that road, okay.
Yep.
There's a truck shop beyond that road.
Stanman's.
With more, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
And were all these added before or after designated Level B?
The house definitely after.
That's an important thing.
The cemetery before.
Well, the cemetery way before, yeah.
Yep.
Well, yes, but Level B, you know, constructing along a Level B road, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was their choice to build there.
But, yes, yeah.
The majority of the traffic is for the next mile, somebody lives right on the corner, so that's where most of the traffic comes from.
And traffic to the hog sites has what kind of impact on Level B road? I think, but thank you for that time to speak, I appreciate that.
Okay, item nine, we'll set the date and time for the public hearing on the road classification. Good morning, Tammy.
July third, okay, at, I'll make a motion to set the date and time as July third at ten oh two. Here in the conference room.
Second.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number ten, this would be a time for the public to make comments about items not on the agenda today. Anybody wish to speak? Yes, Donna?
I don't know if it should be here or another business, but May has come and gone and you had told me that at the end of May, we find out what project Thomas was.
The nondisclosure agreement is still in place and so I'm not able to comment on that.
Show that to us please, so we may see that, or give us a date, because I do believe you, it was specified at the end of May, we are now into June, so.
I thought it was May, Freedom of Amendment.
Yeah, I believe the nondisclosure agreement's still in place, is that correct Cindy?
I believe it is not. It expired May thirty-first.
Okay.
But we are still not at liberty to discuss specifics about the project. This is in regards to our rail project, it has nothing to do with Iowa Select or any hog confinement or hog process.
Well, then you have just one percent of reason factor rail, so that information is helpful, thank you. Helps me a lot.
Any other public comment? Sandra?
Yes, two things. I have not met the roadside management person yet.
Okay.
Is she here?
She is.
Hi. We haven't seen each other personally, we talked on the phone, and I want to commend her because she's done a wonderful job trying to clean out our ditches and we're north of the conservation headquarters and she's done a remarkable job.
She's done a lot on ours, too.
Thank you.
And I think Renee will testify coming down to the conservation meetings in the wintertime, it just fills in with snow.
It does.
And then we have mud, muck, you know, and so I don't know if something more can be done, but there's a lot to be done out there and the trees just keep coming, the bushes keep coming. I took pictures, but didn't have time to get them done. But she needs to be commended because she really went back when she was hired and looked up the past history.
Uh huh.
And I know we complained a lot, but, and then we had a rhodia berry and she eradicated all of that, so.
Good.
Good.
So she needs to be commended for that.
All right, well, appreciate it.
Yeah, the second item I have is in Robertson, I don't know if you all know where Robertson is. We have a family there that was infected from acly because of trash and drugs and they have, in fact, in the last two weeks, twice, they went through our fence into our field because they leave Robertson and they're so stoned that they even left their purse and the identity in the car. And the deputy sheriff came up to our farm where our son-in-law daughter live and waved them up and had our son-in-law come down and verify everything, so. And they are dumping trash in the railroad right away. I mean, it's probably ten foot wide, you know, the side, those everything.
Okay, before you leave today, we'll get you in touch with the sanitarian and we'll see what we can do.
Because the grandfather pays the fee and, but I don't know if some no trespassing, so it's gonna be put up there because that is not their property.
Okay.
And their dog, there's still, their dogs that bit my neighbor in Robertson.
Okay.
Dogs are still alive, so.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate you coming down today.
Thank you Sandy.
Yep.
Good to know. Good job Megan.
Anything else today, public comment? If not, we'll move to item eleven, approval of the minutes from May sixteenth, May twenty-first, and May twenty-third meetings.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May sixteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-third.
I'll second it.
Motion as second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is item twelve, approval of claims for payment, May twenty-third, May thirtieth, and June sixth.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for May twenty-third, May thirtieth, and June sixth.
I will second that.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item I have is Ms. Sue Wolf from the Franklin County Board of Health is here to speak about county health services.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning.
How are you?
Very good, thank you.
I wanted to take this opportunity to speak to the board of supervisors before we got some miscommunications and some misinformation passed around. As the Chair of the Board of Health for Franklin County, we have been made aware of, that we've been servicing patients and clients from Hardin County for many years. And as a board, we had a special meeting on May thirtieth and we've reviewed the claims and information and we, as a board, have made a decision effective immediately that we will no longer be servicing clients from Hardin County. And we will be phasing out all of the clients that we have been servicing over the next ninety days and we will be pushing back to Hardin County. And I wanted to make the board of supervisors and I will be attending the meeting of the Board of Health on the twenty-first and making them aware of that as well. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay.
Can you tell me how that is happening, or how it happened?
I wish I could, I wish I could. I think you will need to go back to your health professionals here in Hardin County and ask them why they have been referring people to Franklin County. I am not a health professional and you will need to go back to them and ask them why they've been referring to Franklin County. But we, we just no longer can do that and I apologize that we have to do that, but our responsibility is to Franklin County.
Okay.
I can totally understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, did you want to make any comment to that, or you're okay?
Hi, I'm Julie Towns.
Hi Julie.
We spoke on the phone.
We have spoken on the phone.
Sue and I have been in contact already and had this communication, so I knew.
Okay.
And I think when she's mentioning health professionals in the county, she's not referencing public health. We are, just to clarify, we are not sending clients to Franklin County. She's talking about physicians, hospitals, that are offering services of home care to Franklin County versus to Hardin County first.
Okay.
And in addition to that, our county attorney is crafting a letter that will go to you and we will also be sending it to doctors, physicians, whomever would be referring.
Sure.
To Franklin County and that letter will be going out to them as well, letting them know that their primary source is going to be Greenbelt and to send them there.
Okay.
As their first source.
We appreciate that.
My question, I guess, is, maybe it's a later conversation, but so we can clarify, are you going to decertify from Medicare then for this service?
No, we are not going to decertify.
For this service area?
No, we're not going to decertify because decertifying would just put us in, we're just not going to service the area.
Because that puts you in a big predicament with Medicare.
Exactly.
No, if you were to refuse Hardin County, if that is in your Medicare service area.
We're not going to stop with Medicare or VA.
Oh, okay.
But we are going to go, we're going to suggest you go back to Hardin County. If it's pushed back to us and that's all that we can do, then yes, we will take VA and Medicare.
That was just my question.
Yep, we will take VA and Medicare if that is the only source.
Okay.
But first and foremost, we're going to go back to your service area.
Perfect.
I appreciate that.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number fourteen, auditor's monthly report.
I'll move to approve the auditor's monthly report, totaling nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for the month of May.
I will second it.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, this morning we have three applications for fireworks permits. Go ahead and ask to consider the applicant Daniel Hauser first.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks permit application from Dan Hauser as D and And fireworks will be displayed on July seventh at three one zero seven five Y Avenue in Union.
I'll second that.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next I would ask for consideration is the application of Jonathan Martin.
Move to approve the fireworks permit for Jonathan Martin. Dates are July fourteenth or the twenty-eighth on two zero five one eight County Highway D sixty-five.
I will second it.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion?
He did answer no to one of those questions as far as operator permit to be covered by insurance for their fireworks display, you did contact him.
Yep, and he did clarify he does have liability insurance that would cover any issues.
Okay, I will second it then.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 The next would be ask for consideration of the fireworks permit for John D Jensen.
Make a motion to approve the fireworks permit application, it's the Jensen family Fourth of July celebration. And the dates on which the fireworks display will take place is June thirtieth and the rain date is July first. And they will be displayed at one three nine two nine oh oh Avenue in Iowa Falls.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next is item sixteen, the weed resolution, I'm gonna let Megan explain this briefly.
So the weed resolution goes in the paper every year and it basically just goes through what's on the noxious weed list and for if you have pasture or farm that has any of the noxious weeds on it, you have to eradicate it by a certain date. And so that's kind of what this is and then it goes through the penalty, which is in Iowa Code three seventeen, the weed law, and then it has the penalty in there and that's.
Okay, so this is nothing new, this is.
Yeah, it goes every year.
Right, but this is nothing new, this is actually, this is nothing to do with the new amended Iowa code.
No.
Okay, that we have somebody coming to talk to us about, so this is just adoption of the same, that we, so we can publish it, correct?
Yes, and then it's basically if, so like if you're driving by, like as a weed commissioner, I don't just drive around, I'm like, oh, there's a pasture and then like go do whatever, I have to be called, which is why this has to be published, so people call me and say they have a complaint.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation.
And is it, is it also true that the state determines what the noxious weeds are each year then?
So, yeah, and that's one thing they changed because they used to have it where the county could be like, oh, we want to throw this one on there and that's part of the new thing is you can't do that because then what happens is like, okay, we have Crown Vetch, so just spray Crown Vetch, well then you're losing, you're not spraying anything else.
Okay.
Because the herbicides, it's like, you know, milestone is mainly for Canada Thistle and you can spray ragweed to kind of kick it, but then it doesn't kill anything else. So it's, all the herbicides are very selective of what, and that's kind of why the state comes up with the weed list.
Okay.
And then Palmer Amaranth is in there too, and I think they added that like last year, but it's not in roadsides yet and it hasn't really made it into central Iowa yet, but there's potential.
Probably headed this way.
Because we added in our hayfield.
Oh, okay.
And had to spray the whole thing and start over, so it's, it's here.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the noxious weed and fines assessed resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion as second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Renee?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item I have is item seventeen, this is a change of status at the county attorney's office.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Denise Patters, effective June sixth. And it's a resignation of her full-time position as Assistant County Attorney.
I will second that.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion?
It's her last day of work is June sixth.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item I have is item eighteen and that is the set the health, dental, and life insurance rates for fiscal eighteen nineteen.
I'll move to approve the, the health, dental, life insurance rates for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion as second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is the set the non-union wage increases for fiscal year nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the all non-union employees' wage increase as of July first two thousand eighteen as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion as second, any discussion?
Do we want to go through?
Sure.
All non-union employees shall receive a one point six one three nine percent increase as of July first two thousand eighteen. All non-union employees having had a performance review as of June eleventh two thousand eighteen shall receive the following raises based on the county's uniform performance review form that was scored on a scale of one to five. If it was, if they have, the employee received a three to a three point five, an additional point five percent would be added. The score of three point five to four would receive an additional one percent, a score of four to four point five would receive an additional one and a half percent, and a score of four point five to five would be an additional two percent on top of the one point one, or one point six one three nine.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes Julie?
What was the percentage of raises that you guys gave yourself? I was.
I, zero.
Huh?
I didn't give myself a raise.
The comp board.
The comp board.
The comp board. We approved the comp board.
What percent did you guys get?
I'm.
I don't even remember.
I don't recall.
I'm sorry. It would be on record in the county auditor's office.
Okay.
Seven point something.
How much?
Seven point something if I recall.
Seven point something, okay, thank you.
I'm not positive on that, but that's what I recall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is the consideration and action on a jail integration, integrated security system proposal. I'll ask jail administrator Nick Whitmore to go ahead and give us a synopsis and overview of what you're proposing.
Do you have copies of?
I do.
Did you give them to the others?
I reviewed them.
Yep.
For over two years, we've been considering the idea of the different jail security systems as far as the integrated doors go. The one we have now is eighteen years old, it was redone back about eight years. It was redone back about eight years ago. It hasn't been very effective. In fact, I just had a meeting the other day talking about the jail's security system, and two hours later, the system went down, and we were all in panic, hoping it was going to come back up. We looked at three different proposals. We went with one from Siemens and Secured State. Siemens is obviously a worldwide reputable company that does a fantastic job. Secured State is leader in the corrections industry. There's a number of reasons we went with them. One of them is we don't have any downtime. That's a huge safety concern. The other proposals proposed that we lose keys for up to two weeks while they got a system and put a new system in. The Siemens company said that that wasn't a logical proposal, and so they chose to move the whole system upstairs to a different location so then they could move one wire at a time, mark everything, and have everything really detailed with no downtime to the facility. You know, we haven't had a fire in 18 years, bless it, but if we did have to go with keys for two weeks, what's going to happen? We'll never know. We drill and we practice with the keys, but you know, that's, it just doesn't seem logical or feasible to me to take our system down for two weeks and cause that danger. The other thing about Siemens is they were a little more expensive upfront, but when the job is done with them, they believe that their job is done. They train our IT people, they train our maintenance people to take care of things afterwards. The other companies have extensive maintenance agreements that they recommended and were needed after annually. Siemens didn't recommend a maintenance agreement. They said, we really shouldn't have to come back if we do for emergencies. But we don't anticipate enough service to go into an agreement. Time is of the essence. If we've waited too long to do this, the system we have is very broken. It still works, but it's broken. Siemens can have the project completed in a four-month timeframe. The other companies are looking at at least a year out until they can get to us. Siemens is out of Des Moines, they're anchoring. They're much more accessible to us. They have seven technicians available that are needed. The other companies are out of Wisconsin. It would take days instead of hours to get there. As I mentioned, the proposal came in higher than we expected. We had $340,000 budget for it. We asked them to go back and rework their numbers. They were at 462,000 and change. We asked them to go back and rework their numbers. They came out at 400 and a half, 49... We met as a group, the sheriff, chief deputy, myself, Mica Cutler from IT, and Matt Jones from IT, and we went over the proposals in detail. We took a whole entire afternoon going through these things. Everybody in that committee agreed that Siemens was the best route to go, even though it was more than we expected it. We took a look at some options. Because we're $110,000 over what we planned, one of them would be that they offer financing. You can go monthly financing for the remainder of 110. You could go annual financing, so we would pay 60,000 plus interest, which amounted to 7% per year for two years. Or we could do a budget amendment at a later time and reprove what we didn't anticipate. I would leave that option in the board. But we struggled to believe that a new system's needed. It's a huge undertaking. It's a huge asking, but I wouldn't ask for it if it wasn't necessarily necessary. And we think that this was by far the very best route to go.
Okay.
I think another important thing to bring up as we listen to the other vendors as well, Siemens is kind of all-inclusive. Now, we're not exclusive to electricians. They'll come up, and they'll send up to run everything and things of that nature. Some of the other vendors, here's the cost of our system. You're responsible for finding an electrician to come in. If this is beyond your normal, they were putting in a 110 outlet or whatever. So we would have incurred a lot of that for that separation, as we would have eaten up a lot of that cost in hiring our own electricians and them to come in. So I think if we'd really, really broke things down, and costs would have been relatively terrible with the other vendors.
Okay.
Mica? Any thoughts, concerns from the IT side of things and the ability to integrate?
The only thing I would mention is, is to echo what Nick said, is the system really needs to be changed and upgraded. It's running software and hardware that's quite outdated. So from an IT perspective, we're really concerned about that going down and after that again.
It may just be a harder task every time.
Yeah.
Because we all...
Right.
And we did like the idea of being able to have Matt, myself trained along with some of the jail staff so that there's a few more people that are familiar with the system. Right now, it's pretty limited, and I'm going to fix it.
I should mention, one of the big selling points, too, was that our previous system was proprietary. And then practically, we redid the last system, we had to spend like $40,000 to break into it. We spent a couple hundred, $100,000 plus in re-making it, which was largely successful at the time, but it didn't last. This is not proprietary, so if we chose to break ties with Siemens at some point in the future, or they didn't, you know, put up their promise, whatever, it's our ownership. It's not theirs, so we don't have to spend any additional money to buy it out.
What's the lifespan or the expected life on this product?
10 years.
Okay.
It's a hardware-software project.
Yep. At this point, I, Nick, would you mind asking for any public comment, questions? Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Your annual budget for the year, you've already exceeded what you projected for the annual year. We don't have this month's or last month's in yet.
Well, as, as we know, I, with the government contract, we can't make money, but we can funnel the money other places that's needed inside the department. And right now, we're about $200,000 over our expenses and revenues, and I expect to maintain that trend. I don't see any difference. I don't see any difference in next year. The immigration issues fluctually, but it takes time. So it was a long NOVA 10 years ago. It was a short, it was a slow fall. It was a long NOVA, but we're at a high again, and I don't expect for years that we'll be looking at a different plateau.
I would prefer the budget amendment or what's already been budgeted in capital projects. I know we have an extra $100,000 that we did on the supervisor's side. Jody has an extra $200,000 that could be used for it on top of the $340,000. I think the money could be pulled from either one of those. But I do believe that we need to move on this.
I do.
I don't believe a financing would be appropriate.
Originally, we thought we could finance it at 3% and it's 7-point something. So it wasn't as valuable as it was before.
So I, yeah, we could do that internally.
Yeah. An amendment could be made, but off the revenues of, off of this year. But I believe the money's already been financed that we could probably use that from instead.
Right. Out of capital projects.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I would prefer, anyway.
Okay.
When do you need a note to start your project?
I just need a signature. If I can handle that, I think we can hear you guys.
You're welcome. I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Siemens for $449,685 for purchase of the new security system.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Nancy?
I do have one question.
Oh, sorry.
This bill will be into next year's budget? Or will it begin this? Is this bill going to be into next year's budget?
The invoice, July, after July 1st. Okay. Okay. Nancy?
Renee?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 21, I have a change of status for secondary roads department.
I'll move to approve the change of status, secondary roads department, Luke Pickering, effective of 6-1 of 2018.
It's a resignation.
Resignation.
I will second it.
Okay. I have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just want to thank him first time. He's a good mechanic, he's a good guy.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, item 22, other business.
I guess I have something. So to clarify, because I know I'm going to get asked this on the wage increases. So if somebody got a 4.0, do they go into the higher category, or does yours separate at 4.01?
It goes up to the next, so 4.0. Yep.
That would be, okay.
Correct. Okay. Go on to item number 23. That would be awarding the fiscal year 2019 fuel contract. So everything looked like it was in place, Taylor?
Yep. AgVantage is the only bidder, had a pretty good chance of winning, so everything looks good. So yeah, I'd recommend giving it to AgVantage.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the fuel contract with AgVantage FS.
Second it.
Okay. I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next would be award the equipment lending contract.
Iowa Falls State Bank was the lowest, and it went right with a 2.48%.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the Iowa Falls State Bank loan at the 2.48%.
I will second that.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank everybody for putting bids in.
I was glad to see this many respond to the, to the request. We didn't have that many the last time, so this was good to see.
All in favor of approving the Iowa Falls State Bank 2.48%, say aye.
Aye.
Item 25, I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.